We have public forum now, anybody can speak if they'd like to. But I'd like to remind everybody that the general public can weigh in on any agenda item. You just have to raise your hand and be involved in the conversation. Just don't stand up and yell. Is everybody clear with that? Consider the agenda. Any additional corrections? Yep, motion to approve. House Speaker move second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Fulton.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, our final plea estimate from Sunset Drive?
Yeah, I just want to do, discuss this a little bit. As Lana and I were talking about this more today. Just know that, that the little drainage soil there between McCormick's and the neighbor house, is, it was never, if it was done, it wasn't done to setbacks. And I'm still a little concerned about a, a little bit of a crown in there as far as drainage not, not being the soil. And there's just not very many rock down there at the riprap, riprap rock at the outlet. So, I talked to their engineer about that today and he said, yeah, you still probably need to release most of the retainage. He said he would suggest we hold back $2,500 and, and release the rest. But the, this $2,500 should be held until the summer.
A lot of that $2,500 covered if we have to do something with it?
Oh, if we do it ourselves, yeah.
Okay, is that enough to hold back?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought we had that last payment on page.
Well, we've, we've paid the last payment. Other than this retainage is five percent of the project. You know, and we hold that for an extra month afterwards. Just kind of for these reasons, to make sure that everything's ten, and all the bills are paid. And we haven't heard any concerns about building.
Do you need, you need most of your paid bill minus $2,500?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Us, yes, Fulton.
Yes.
Okay, hopefully we have a new city attorney.
The, the agreement is, is in the packet and we just recommend approval of these things.
We have that motion. So who move second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Fulton.
Yes.
Us, thank you.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you.
Okay, we have the resignation of the building inspector?
Yeah, Darryl has, has resigned his, his position as, Darryl, I should have resigned his position as building inspector and then also resigned from the planning zoning commission, which will be effective on January 15th. And the council should probably take action on the resignation.
Do you need a motion to accept those two resignations? Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Fulton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
No, not that makes any difference.
Is there anybody can replace him? We're gonna, do we have anybody in the office?
Put some ads out.
Well, we didn't talk about this now. I want to kind of go through that. What, what our building inspector has done. I just want to go through the building inspection process then. It's on page two in the, in the council memo. Kind of walk through that. Um, make sure that everybody's aware of the process. See if anything comes to mind about any potential improvements to the process or, or how you might see anything changing. So, just the process about getting a building permit. So the applicant gets a, the building permit application from city hall. And we give them this packet that has the application on it. Has the zoning regulations for the district. So like if it's an R2 district, they get the R2 regulations. And there's also some general regulations that apply to all of the districts. And that's all included in this packet. And then there's also this checklist that's included in there too. And that was in the packet and we just want to go through this with because it kind of details what it is that we check for. Because, again, remembering that, you know, we're checking for zoning compliance. We don't have a building permit. So, these are the types of things that we ask for the information when somebody comes in to get a building permit. So we know what's zoning district they're in and have they found the property tense. And if there's any questions about setbacks and whether they're legal, we would require that property tense has been found and we have gone so far from time to time as to require survey. We want to know the front yard and the rear yard setbacks. Those are both measured to overhangs. Number of stories, being one story, two stories, or it could be a story and a half. This says left side or right side yard, again measuring setback, or excuse me, to the overhangs. And that's gotta be at least a minimum of four feet off the property line. If, if they sit on an alley, it gotta be at least 10 feet from the alley. We ask for the height at the peak because we regulate height. The height on a main structure, maximum height that's 35 feet. Uh, just a couple requirements about, about minimum housing standards. And we, actually we have three minimum housing standards. First one is they gotta be on a permanent frost-free foundation. But that can be a peered foundation. And you'll see that from time to time with, with manufactured homes. It can be a, a peer foundation. Uh, rough pitch needs to be three to 12 or greater. We also have a minimum square footage requirement at 700 square feet for a minimum square footage. Check for open space requirements. And this is a, this is an issue from downtown and partly dealing with what the definition of open space is. Because the question then is, is whether, basically whether driveways are considered part of open space. And that's, it come up here recently, really was questioned. And if driveways aren't part of open space, there's some real issues from time to time on, especially on lake lots. Uh, we ask about any easements and whether they approach upon any known easements. Do they enclose their water or electric or gas meter? And of course, this is one thing that we check for because it's happened before. People would enclose it. So, um, we do ask about that. Does it mean off-street parking requirements? Um, if they're doing it, basically water sewer work, we require tracer wires to be installed now too. So we would ask them and go through this requirement with them, the tracer wires be installed. And whether a state electrical permit is required. We ask about whether addressing water runoff. And it's just really informational. We don't govern that necessarily. But we want to know about downspouts and that type of stuff and whether they're really putting any water on the neighbor. We have always considered and we still consider, you know, water on your neighbor's still a separate issue. But we do, we do want to try to mitigate that during construction. Bottom part then, dealing with the two accessory buildings, about whether they're attached to the primary structure or not. Are they enclosed with four walls? That's the thing about freestanding carports. Basically ends up being a prohibition on freestanding carports. If you're gonna have a carport, it needs to be securely attached to your main structure. Uh, height at the peak, maximum height of accessory buildings is 15 feet if they're freestanding. Um, are they any closer to the front lot line than the principal structure? If it's a detached garage, it can't be any closer to the front lot line than, than what the principal structure is. Is it a standalone garage on a residential lot? We have some restrictions on that too, it's only allowed, allowed in certain areas. And then is the detached garage residential in character? It's still required to be, to look somewhat residential. And then there's this issue about the vertical corrugated metal side. Next page just shows a little bit about, about concrete, what we would do to check on concrete, about thickness of sidewalks and driveway backs. And then a few things on fences, about the material and the height, distance from the lot line. And as the neighbor signed off on it, if it's gonna be on the lot line, the neighbor needs to sign off on it. Uh, I guess my point just being, those are the things that we look for. And as we talk about the building inspector, you know, that's what he's, that's, that's what they're out there looking for is, is these things in particular. And, you know, the last issue dealing with siding was kind, kind of a, uh, unique issue because it wasn't necessarily zoning. A traditional zoning issue is a lot more of a building materials type of issue. And, and the question came up about how, how does that end up, how did that happen before? You know, and at what point does, does it get inspected? So let's, we can still walk through the rest of that on page two. We'll go through some of that stuff about the inspection. Um, so the person that's got, got this application from me and, and then we can answer any questions. We generally go through what the project is. Sometimes it can just be that an application shows up because they can just get the application form without any of the attachments. You just get the form off the internet. Okay? Uh, the application, uh... The applicant returns the application then and all that we ask for is that footprint drawn, showing the distance to the property lines and, and then the fee is paid. Is paid then, it's about $50 for small projects or $100 for projects that are $50,000 or more. And of that though, the building inspector is paid, is paid $40 for each application that's received. Okay? And that then be, becomes an issue from time to time. Because some of these projects, especially a new, new housing construction or anything like that, uh, as Darryl goes around and checks on them, it's, it's several inspections. And, you know, basically, it, it ends up doing a lot of work for 40 bucks. Now, sometimes a shed is, is set out there and you get paid $40 for letting them set a shed, you know? So a little, it's a little give and take, but the, um, the pay is not, you know, it's not a lot. Um, so then two copies of, I give two copies of this application to the building inspector and the building inspector goes out and checks the site, measures up the setbacks. Um, again, he's just checking for these, these issues that we went through on the zoning code. And then if the application meets the regulation, the building inspector signs it and returns it to me. If it, if it does not meet the regulation, the inspector talks with that applicant, is gonna inform them where it does not meet the code and tries to work with them if possible about ways to make it compliant. But if there are problems that can't, that can't be corrected or if the applicant wants variance, then Darryl would, would turn the issue over to me and we'd work through, um, with the, with the applicant about a variance process. Or sometimes the answer is just no, that they can't get it fixed and they're, and we're not, not able to accommodate what they want. Uh, building inspector, if they approve it, it's of course then submitted to the city council, the project proceeds. And then the, the building inspector goes out to those approved projects, he does check on them. And just that at some point in the, in the process, after the construction is basically substantially complete, he's going to sign off on it as a second inspection that has been approved. Okay? Well, again, that's the, the deal, say about the siding issue that we had last night. So we're, we're checking for zoning compliance and we know that the construction's done and the, the building's not getting any bigger, but the siding's not on. And, you know, it certainly has been, they signed off on the second approval and just turned it in. Because by and large, we don't regulate a lot of materials, you know? With the siding then being, you know, the one issue that we work. So, um, I guess I'm just interested in your thoughts on the process. I mean, is there, are there opportunities where you think things could be at all changed to, to avoid any of the problems? You know, because my, my initial feelings on things are, we go through things and Darryl's been our building inspector for 18 years. And over the course of 18 years, we have had a handful of issues. And that's about it. But we do have problems from time to time. And, uh, some of it has, and we've changed this process along the way and added that checklist and this type of stuff, so...
So then, then said they're done about that, for good?
No. Just that it would be a, a planning zoning issue, we haven't had a planning zoning issue.
My question is, I guess, I don't know how the town do this, so I'm just throwing this out here. Having a building inspector on the P and Z, is that a good thing or is that a conflict of interest thing?
And it may be a good time to separate them. For us, it, it always worked pretty well because it was very knowledgeable then on both ends of things. That the inspector certainly knew what was going on and as a P and Z member is very...
Maybe, but when we have, the inspector needs to come to the meeting.
Oh, sure, could be too.
Instead of, instead of him being on the board.
Well, I think, I think Scott has a good idea, or has, is right. I mean, there's times, I know, I sat in on some of the meetings. There's a lot of times that Darryl was able to answer questions right off the bat. And he knew what the, he knew, Darryl knew the ordinances, he knew the code. But, so I think there's a trade-off. I mean, conflict, probably, you know? So, I don't know. And but, on the other hand, if you had two different people, you got two different opinions. So, I don't think that's a bad idea either.
So you're kind of saying that they should be separated, is that...
I think so. I mean, but, you know, it's not, whatever you said, unless you have somebody that's pretty knowledgeable, like you is, you know?
Well, you know, you could do, there's a number of ways you could do this too. If you have a, a meeting like that and you need the building inspector, why couldn't we pay him to come?
Send in a meeting.
To attend a meeting, that way, I mean, that way he is there to help settle issues or any questions that might, you know, somebody's wanting. And I think that way you don't look at, well, the building inspector's giving him a special grant because he's on P and Z. So it'd be a whole different idea. I don't, what do you think, Dave?
That sounds good, we need to, how would we pay to do your thing, you know, offering $45 and we get...
That's a going rate.
Yeah. Uh, Dave, can we ask a question?
Hey, we already approved the agreement.
What, uh, what kind of experience have you had with...
I've, I've never seen a building inspector be on the P and Z. I think it, it has a lot to commend it though, when you think about it. I don't think it's technically, uh, what we would call a conflict of interest because, uh, there's other members of the board. So I don't think it's legally prohibited, but, uh, on the other hand, the building inspector is providing evidence, so to speak, to, to the board. And the board is acting as an adjudicator as to whether or not, uh, the variance should be granted. So, it would probably be cleaner if, if he's not a member of the board.
So we need the P and Z to come with recommendations for the council? What we want, what we don't want?
As far as what?
I mean, is there something you want to change?
Um, well, I don't know, I don't know that there, that there's anything to change, but I do think it's a terrific opportunity to discover.
Right. I guess, you know, I don't have a lot of experience dealing with building inspectors and stuff, so as far as input, I guess, you know, until, I guess, some time. Would this be something where you'd get some of your local construction guys to deal with this kind of stuff?
We're hoping to tap one of those guys for building inspector, I'd say.
Well, not of that, but I mean, if there was something there, they could take a little more action of saying, hey, maybe this should be in there. Like you say.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Feel a little of their people on it?
Yeah, and I mean, it's kind of...
Is there any question here?
Well, like I said, we know, we know who's all around here that builds homes and does different things. Just ask for some input. I mean, you know, we're getting a feel of what the contractor's got to work with every day. So I don't know.
Good idea.
Can we pull out, or send it out to all the contractors and say, hey, how's your time?
Until, until we're looking for it.
I don't know if that's a good, I mean, for 25, 30...
We're idiots.
We're forced to.
I've tried to, I've tried to get us a raise every year and they say we can't, we gotta give the next council a raise. I said, well, that ain't gonna happen.
We'll send out a letter so we can get some response.
Yeah.
As soon as they don't hear us today, yes, we...
We sure can. I, I want to go through a few other things you had on, on this issue and it's on page three of the memo. And this deals with that, the issue that Cody brought up at the last meeting about zoning administrator. Okay? She, she said that, that we have these two chapters of the code. And one, that we have a separate chapter on building permits. And, and then we have a chapter on, on the city zoning ordinance. Okay? And in the building permits chapter, the building officials are identified. And it's the building inspector and the mayor and city clerk. Okay? And so we've always kind of just administered things along those lines with the three people as administrators. Okay? But our zoning code calls for a specific zoning administrator, which I would think that we have never appointed a standalone zoning administrator.
Not in 25 years. And I know of.
You know, so, um, that's an issue I think to address about, again, how do you think the, uh, the admini, the zoning administrator ought to be? Because in the building permit section, we have the three people who are identified as building, uh, building officials. And it's always me and Darryl and the mayor. And what we find out is that Darryl takes care of all of the inspections and doing the outfit work. And I take care of all of the paperwork and working with anybody on any special requests. And, you know, kind of getting them ready for the application and talking through the, the process. And then the mayor can be involved, they sure hasn't been over history. I think we have been involved in a couple of issues, I mean, that's about it. So, uh, at some point we should designate a zoning, a zoning administrator.
Separate from the building inspector.
That's the question I guess.
Can they be combined? And then have a separate person on the planning and zoning instead of a zoning inspector?
Sure, I mean, sure can be.
Say that again?
You, you would have your, a normal person applied, applied or on the planning and zoning board. And then your building inspector and your zoning administrator would be like a combined one person. But they would not be on the P and Z board. They would kind of sit in if they needed to oversee that end of it, answer questions like you say. But it would be completely separate from the planning and zoning act of board.
Just that the practical side of that is that if you look through these duties that I've listed there about the zoning administrator that are in our code, a lot of them are administrative duties that I've... So it gets to be a, kind of sticky issue on that, you know, as far as, again, separating job responsibilities. And if you only have one zoning administrator, it would, it would be strange to have our part-time zoning administrator doing a lot of administrative work.
But, uh, so, if we did it this way, would that make a difference? Say you would do the generate paperwork, do the paperwork? And then whoever this person would come in and review it and okay it? Would, would that seem to be the right way to do that or?
Well, they would still be doing what Darryl... Yeah, and you would still continue to do your administrative part of it.
The process that we have probably is not bad. I think it's just, you know, naming of who is the zoning administrator. If there are one, one or two, if we have two, there's always the opportunity then for, uh, a disagreement between the two. Although there is, uh, there's a process in place, you know, for hearing, uh, I guess, what do we call it? Appeals of the zoning administrator's decision and that goes before adjustment.
Can't we make the city clerk the zoning administrator?
Hey, you could, but I don't know that you really want to do that. You know, unless you want to have a building inspector and then you have a zoning administrator.
We just don't want to pay anybody else.
Welcome to Iowa.
Who'd you recommend? Some...
Buddy? Yeah, and I, and I don't know, because the practical side of things again is that I'm probably gonna work with the applicant a lot up front and answer questions, you know, I'm, I'm personally still see a lot of stuff.
Why don't we leave it the way it is then?
And we sure can.
I mean, we're the mayor and we're who I know is responsible.
Yep, you know, and...
I mean, it's a matter of identity is what it is.
Yeah. And I, I'd be fine, you know, whereas I think, like I say, I think practically...
He was ready, and he was an administrative partner anyway. And the mayor is basically the third person that we need to be involved.
Like you said, you've never had too many issues.
No.
Not too many, but, but if there's an issue, it ends up back with the city council. You know, there's an argument that says that ought never happen. You know, it, it ought to be able to be attended.
I, I still feel with the building inspector to be someone that is not, you know, involved.
Yep.
That's just...
Right, well, I agree with that too.
We just go that way, we can still leave the administration like you're doing in France?
Right, that's what I'm thinking, but have, the zoning person needs to be a separate person than from the building inspector in my book.
So do we need to instruct the city clerk to hand you any paper for a building inspector?
So, just want to advertise to the building inspector.
I'm, I'm sure.
We'll tell Morton off the way he stops, we'll get him paid for it. Second?
Second.
We'll call.
Okay, Fulton. Thank you.
Yes.
Us, Reese.
Yes.
Moore.
Yeah.
I'll put a notice out there about P and Z.
Okay, we're talking about the concrete disposal.
The concrete disposal stuff. So that everybody know where this was at about, about, um, Gene and Merle's Traders Farm, south of town. So it's a little pit that's on the south side of the east-west gravel road.
I think you're gonna get that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a, a loafer out there and a pit.
Yeah. So, I was asking Dave about, about some opinion on that. You just, can you go through that a little bit, Dave, on what you're thinking?
Well, uh, we, we will have to go through a permit process with the DNR. And probably, um, since it's a gravel pit, we might have to check in with the mining inspectors for the state of Iowa and make sure they agree with the way that landowners are rebuilding or replacing the permit. I understand it to be an abandoned gravel pit or a former gravel, gravel pit. Then the city would have to have, uh, the environmental people from the DNR approve this and replace the disposed concrete, which I don't think, it isn't, uh, it isn't difficult, but it has to be done. You can't just start the process and then come in and ask for forgiveness afterwards. You could get a little touchy about stuff like that.
My son-in-law was talking about this and he said if there's water in the bottom of the pit, get more of it. If it was dry, he says, you wouldn't have no problem.
And you can't have, if there's water involved, then you have to have the, the water people from the DNR involved with it too. And also we've got to watch out for anything that's not, for any iron or steel, that type of thing. So there's issues like that that would have to be ironed out. I don't know if the concrete you get, does it use every rebar in it or not?
Yeah, I've pulled a lot of wood.
It might be crushed out, that's actually, I mean, once you start down that road, there's a lot of issues with, uh, the placement in that pit. But like Jerry says, it's a win-win deal, so it would, it would be a way to work it out.
On that and for what, for what it costs to push the dump back all the time.
But it, this would save us a couple thousand dollars a year too.
Oh, yeah.
Have somebody come push it back, but...
But they also said like, uh, well, Chewie or those guys, you know, Dean, what, they also have a grind the concrete, you know? And if there was enough there, they would run that through, seeing, of course, they need to have irons to separate. Which we could saw straight in that ground. Or else they, they're always chopping out at, uh, the other pit, you know, to stop the town, you know, a mile over. It's a little further, but then we wouldn't have to bury it either, you know, so...
But this will be up to landlords to get all this stuff done. We don't want to get involved in this.
Well, it depends on how you, I, I sent Scott a copy of the code that we would be concerned with. And if the city's involved, I think we have to have some type of, either an easement and, or a lease. Uh, we don't want any ownership on this thing. But, yeah, that was my initial reaction, was the more that the, uh, property owner can take on, the better this would be for the city. Because after, once, once the municipality becomes involved with it, we have to do it right. We have to have the right permits and the right budget. Whereas the landlord, particularly agriculture farm owners tend to get away with it. Having one of those, one people working, the city doesn't know.
Yeah, it just seems like, obviously, we're involved in this somehow when we put a sign out there that says concrete disposal.
Yeah.
And also becomes a liability, wishing for insurance for the landowner. Well, and for the city.
They just have to move the sign down, so...
Well, having to have to draft them, what the county needs to go. Well, having to, that would draft them, with the county to go to the corner and, you know, to get that one.
Talking about delivery, I'm also talking, if it's storage, uh... Yeah, I say, I just really want to know if the council is interested in, in seeing this happen in Missoula, will, with the, with the property owners and...
Well, I think, who needs, the guy that sits right in it, checks out and see what, what D N R, and see what they can do.
Well, and we will too, we'll, we'll be looking at that. Calling D N R and seeing what, what would he do then.
How long do you think it's going to take to fill that pit? Two years it's going to be full anyway. So, I mean, it ain't a long-term deal for the city, two years and it's going to be full.
Look at Hancock, just take the truck out of there instead of dumping it there, just take it there.
Then it gets the city out, just talk to, tell Hancock to do that and get the city out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Let them dump their trucks down there and let, let contractors take it down to the dump, you don't have nothing to do with it, that's between Hancock and them other people and the city ain't involved.
We're out of the loop that way.
So how, how much of the rubble down there comes from Hancock versus, right?
That's a seventy-five to eighty percent of it, is Hancock's.
I'll take that, I'm missing that, too, David.
You know, that would mean that they got...
They can't legally dump that.
Well, I knew they couldn't.
They're doing it, but they can't legally dump that.
We already danced with the D N R and lost, we don't want to do that again.
Yeah, that'd be a legal thing.
No, 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 no.
Should we just start with Hancock?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll talk with the property owner and really encourage them that that would happen, we just got to stay out of it.
Yeah.
If it becomes, if they're interested in pursuing it further, we can still talk to the, you know, the, the D N R more about it, but...
Well, if they can just cross that off on our sign, that's pretty, pretty private part.
Well, they sure could, but not if we're, not if we would allow private dumping, you know, we'd still allow for the private folks to do that and just send Hancock down there. Down to, uh, Traders.
Hancock could dump, and the rubble guy's not a store, if you're going now. Because the other guy's got the rod out, not Hancock, they have the rod, you know?
No.
It's just the extra stuff, so that would be...
Keep it solid.
Yeah. Yeah, because you keep it out of wars.
Wind stars.
Very good.
Okay, Scott's looking for permission to put the recordings on the website.
Yeah, I'd tell you that if, if we want to video the meetings, it's probably a good thing, it's, uh, put it out there to the public. If it goes on the city's website, we'd like council permission for that to happen.
Do you want to motion to approve that?
Yeah, if we can, if we could do that.
Motion?
Yeah.
How did that go?
No call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mulder. Wolf. Us, yes, Reese. Good night. Discuss this just a little bit more then, because we'll, we'll get this on the, on the website. You know, what, what'll happen is we'll put a, it'll go on YouTube, and we just end up with a link on the city's website so that you can even watch that on YouTube. But as they start to think about these issues more, just more issues kind of pop up, I just want some, need some guidance from y'all on that. That at some point, we have, likely have a resolution to prove that... That it would, uh... Just me, starting the third one, third paragraph down. So we'd resolve to, uh, that the clerk should be responsible for making the video. And, uh, further resolve that the, uh, the audio and video of council meetings be disseminated through the website, okay? And that the audio or video needs to be posted within so many days of the council meeting. And I, I think that's appropriate, and we ought to, uh, have a requirement there, but at the same time, uh, you know, things happen and it always can't be posted, it must stay. But, you know, in my mind, I would have every intention of having it done quickly, but if, if that were to say seven days, I'd just kind of like that. It's just, uh, again, having opportunities not to, you know, you're covered on having any technical problems or any scheduling issues.
So, so to put a consistency on it, so we may meet on the first and third Mondays, so if we have them posted by the second and fourth Monday, that would show a consistency that, that everybody, once they see the pattern, would be there instead of, would not be there.
You know, I, the intent, the intention would be to have it up quickly, you know, because I'm sure people are interested totally after it happened. But, uh, like I said, just problems can occur, and I don't, I sure don't want to fail to meet a requirement because we've got some problems. The next one is more of a question, though. There's some options about, for about public access channel, and, you know, whether you, whether you would like to be able to run that on the public access channel. And, and issues about Facebook. You know, this is kind of the idea of, we put the link on our website, people can come look at it on our website. The other side is more pushing it out to the public through public access or for Facebook. And there certainly is an argument that says, no, you fulfilled your obligation, you just put it on your website and people know where to go. But I would, you know, like that, have, think about that question about whether you'd like to do any proactive pushing through the, through Corn Belt or through Facebook.
Do this cost to have it on Corn Belt?
No. If, if they're running the same thing like they did for churches, it didn't cost to do it.
I look at, if you leave it on our city one, that gets people to look at our city, the website, and they look at other things. I mean, I don't like the, you're trying to focus on mainly the local people anyway, and if you want to build, you know, the word don't get out to where it's at, so it's up to you.
It seems to me that Facebook is the age, it's the age we live in. I mean, the Sack News has been putting it on there, right, they're putting it on Facebook.
We can always put the link on Facebook, though, I mean, always put that you can go to the website to get it, you know?
Rather than having it on Facebook, just put the link.
You put the link to YouTube?
Straight away.
I think so.
Well, and that's kind of the question, really, is, uh, again, it's pushing the information out versus having the public come to the website. And certainly, there's an argument that says it's okay that they come to the website.
Maybe you ought to try the website first, maybe if there are any complaints, if they'd like to see it on Facebook or something, generally, you could do that.
Well, then, yeah, by, by rights, there shouldn't be any complaints, if somebody comes, comes up and says, I'd like to see that, you have to send a website, you put it on there.
Well, we can put on Facebook, you know, to see the meetings, please go to the website.
Mm-hmm. And I'd likely do that through the newsletter, anyway, they were gonna, they'll be, uh, they'll be on...
I like the, the idea of, um, traffic to the website. So, yeah, we put the link on and just say, you know, if it's on Facebook, just say, if this is for it, then it still draws them to, to the website.
Will we update that regular?
Or they can see more of what's happening, you know?
We'll say, uh, maybe not as regular as what we'd like, you know, I would tell you that the, updating the webpage is just another, one of the things that's done, and Kate, Kate does it, but it is, you know, it's done at the end of the day, if you've got some time, you know, it, it's oftentimes doesn't end up being a high purpose, but it, we're going to hold our feet to the fire about putting a link up there, it's done.
You sure we got nothing behind?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're going to bring those resolutions next council meeting?
Yeah, sure can, but I want to go through these next couple of points yet, too, because this, this will happen, uh, from time to time, and you need to know how to address it when it does happen, you know, if people do want a copy of the file. This would say, of course, they're public, uh, and if they want a file that's small enough that we can email it, that I can email it free, if, if they want a video file, gets to be too big to email, they get it for free, if they bring their own media, or if the city provides media, it's like we'd be providing anything else. We have a general policy on anything we provide to the public is cost plus point per se.
You should be able to put it on Dropbox. Just drop it in Dropbox and they can get it.
I suppose, that, that stuff I'm not very good at.
It'd be easy to do.
I need to learn. And about retention policy, this would say, maintain it for a year. After a while, you know, it's going to be pretty large, and then you have storage concerns, but, uh, there's nothing, there's no state mandated requirement about, about retainage, and actually, one year is, uh, how long you have to retain closed sessions, so it's just the only thing that I have a, uh, even a little rule of thumb about. And the last one there, that members of the public are always welcome to, to the council meeting, using the personal equipment, you know, I think it's, just want to let everybody know, know that, and if somebody wants to go up and record, that you can... Everybody all right with that?
No, I'm fine.
Take out the thing above, Corn Belt. Okay, thank you, that helps.
Okay, good beside.
Uh, yeah, pardon me?
You have a better deal?
We do have two options. And the one for the application was four hundred and ten dollars less, but I would tell you that, uh, consulting with, with Ben Wallace and Jim Millenacher, you know, they're just really pleased with, with the work of this aquatic environment consultant last year. The one thing that they're able to promise us that the other one can't is that they can do the job in one day. And the other one, this would be a, just a much bigger job than, than what they could say that they could handle, you'll guarantee them that it would all be done in that same day. Total cost on, on A E C, and that's the same one we used last year, is nineteen thousand four hundred, it's, you see, last year's price was eighteen nine forty, so it's up four hundred and sixty dollars. Now, the really good news out of that is that, uh, the D N R has come up with fifteen thousand dollars to put towards the herbicide application. So it's just the, uh, four thousand, four hundred dollars that would be split amongst departments now. And so it's the city and the L P A, and Sack County said they participated.
Some comments about that, people like it.
Oh, yeah. Is the Black Office Association, you would look at this?
Just, no, just, and the, because the city would be the contracting board. They're just looking at this, saying they'd like to, like to get it in place, or know where they're at, because the argument was, you got to work on permits, there actually is no permit anymore. So, because the, because the D N R is the applicator. Anyway, I would recommend that A E C is the same company as well.
I'm going to say, we know what you got there, and it's been through at once, and they, a good job as far as I'm concerned, you know, for driving all the way everywhere.
Everything was happening, wasn't it?
Yeah. I mean, it's...
There's been improvement.
I haven't heard anything yet, so, you know.
So any motion? Second?
I want the second.
Go call.
Okay, Wilton.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Steve Martin Law is wanting to be reappointed to the representation, I think that'd be a good idea, so...
Second?
Go call.
Just a point, her name is no longer mine now.
Oh, yes, um...
Barney.
Sir Barney.
Did she change, change her name?
Yeah, she got married.
I, I knew she got married.
She's Mr. Barney.
Barney, again, that's Barney, Barney. Okay, uh, Wilton.
Oh, yes.
We're voting. Wilton, thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mulder.
Okay, Camp Chris, has that a good year?
Oh, Ruth, it's...
Drum roll, please.
No firing squad for you, there, uh, good job.
You want to bring up a chair, though, Ruth, and you'll...
All right, go.
And we'll start to talk to all of the departmental staff, too.
Because we do, your department, department needs first, because Ruth can do something she wants.
Yeah.
Sound downhill after that.
Because she has a little question.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the field report.
What's eight, uh...
Fourteen.
Fourteen. So, there it is.
Well, good job, thanks, every night.
I do wish you'd be there. Don't expect this every year, because even though fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, we've had construction, people down there all the time, this year, and I never took track of that until this year, this year, just the construction income was forty-eight dollars, just from the construction deal. So that makes a big difference.
Well, you take that off, that's still, uh, pretty, yeah, pretty good year.
I know, but, but we had, in, in between the last three years, we've had, like, the Highway Twenty, we've had the ethanol plant, we've had the, um, elevator at early, we've had windmill, um, with the pipeline, and now all the pipeline this year, and, and I think that we've got some of those coming back this year to finish up, or to repair what they damaged.
Well, I think you pretty well...
Or to take out and...
Take it out.
They have to come back into a lot of the, uh...
They would work on that the other day, while we went...
Were they?
In their own, uh, looks good.
We'd take a look at the top line there, just the camping, just the camping line, and you can just compare it over the years. But we were talking about what makes for a good year. But, you know, in this case, what makes for a good year is construction helps out a lot, okay? Lake, of course, was in, was, was high and in really good condition. And, but, the other thing is all those improvements that we made down at the campground, particularly the, uh, concrete pit. There, if we look at the, the sites on the, on the next page, you can just kind of see what, what each one of those spaces generates.
Well, if you look at concession, it's for good.
Concession, that's more than double.
You need to calculate your shop. He was a doubter, wasn't he? And I'm never going to let him forget it. We bought...
Yeah, just like Randy, like she owns the...
I wouldn't tell it.
I would say the mayor's bought a lot of those, uh...
We purchased, uh, oh my goodness, fourteen hundred and forty for real. And we sold fourteen hundred and fifteen of them. We paid for the machines, and we didn't even get it till the first of July.
Yeah, well...
Well done.
It's true, that's nice job, Ruth.
Yeah.
So we need two of them, huh?
But it will, it was well worth it. Now we just have to come up with some other new ideas. What others than that? What else do we need to go through?
Not really, just, uh, just know that all of the harvester costs and revenues and all of the herbicide costs and revenues are rolled into this parks analysis, too, because we want to look, want to look at the bottom line. We want to say that the income from the, from the campground pays for parks operation, and that is all parks operation that pays for the, for the personnel to, to, uh, maintain all of our droughts. And then you still get to that bottom line. So, you know, you can say, we made seventy-eight thousand dollars this year, okay? That's not all true, we don't pay ourselves for utilities, you know, is the one thing that's, that's often brought up, we, we pay ourselves, but then come out of Ruth's account.
My, I'm good.
Yeah. But we still, of course, we still had a great year, generated lots of revenue.
What does electric bill cost, kind of?
You don't know, it's not me.
It is me. We, and we do, we actually bill ourselves, but the electric department pays for the electric down there, the water department pays for the water.
That'd be kind of nice to know, though.
I just, I just...
And we can quickly find out, it's just, it's just the count.
You didn't know that one time, did you?
It's, uh, a hundred ninety-one thousand.
Bottom line, Ruth.
Bottom line.
Ruth, you're walking it out.
I'd ask you, two hundred thousand gallons every month. That's a drop in the.
But we, we do have those numbers, I can get it pretty quick.
Drop to two thousand.
How much?
It'd be about two thousand. Half a month.
For a month.
That's all you, four, five, nine, ten, fifty.
Ruth, is there a way we can get Mike to work more hours, so that we don't get behind in the spring?
Uh, Mike, uh, worked five hours less than Eric did this year, or five weeks less than Eric did, and he's working less and less every year for us. So, we're gonna have to either jack him up or something.
And what's an issue in the spring when he's not here?
I know.
Not a good one.
No. Cause Eric is a darn good employee, and I don't want to lose Eric getting frustrated about something.
He's the best one I've seen down there in all the years I've been here.
He's a good one. Never complains, just works. stays on the move.
They're rare.
Yeah. Look at that, I don't even have, I want you to know, Scott adds a platform online.
Yeah. Gosh, you ought to walk through this stuff on our departmental needs assessment, Ruth, and just for, for each one of the departments, which you see, council is uh, uh, we have this vehicle and equipment inventory for each of the departments, so that's on page sixteen, and, and this is gonna have the department heads rate their equipment, rate the condition of the equipment, note anything that's, that's, you know, poor, poor conditioner, needs to be addressed. It also then has mileage or hours on, so you see that mileage and hours, which is one of these pieces of equipment. Next page then, and it does the same thing for the facilities. Gives, gives a condition rating of the facilities, you know, asks about capacity, are they, are they too big, too small? And then what's happening with annual maintenance costs, and then whether there'd be any comments. And then, the one that, that, that they'll be most interested in talking about is page nineteen, then, for each one of the departments, you'll see this, uh, the departmental needs assessment, where we'll be talking about budget priorities for this year and for upcoming years. Wanna walk through those, Ruthie?
Sure, Scotty.
Mister Freeze, do you?
Well, we, we have a trade-in, the landlord rating every year, so that's a good deal. We never got our mulch replaced on last year, which we need to do, because they're, they need to be replaced. It's not replaced or added to.
We didn't get that done.
We didn't get any additional stuff, no. The only stuff that's down there is from the original project.
And it needs to be taken care of.
What I do, we did.
I don't know, it just disappeared. And it, even though I see all the law, so it, it's just a.
We got through the plate.
So how far is that ship?
Minnesota, tell them.
Didn't it come from Minnesota? Then the truck walked around the, the, dipped it off, there's a reef and then we had to walk in.
What Custer has, what is?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that is, okay. Well, then, then you use the, that belt to put it down.
Mm-hmm. Just, in this case, it would be half a load.
Oh.
It's not. It's just filling in in areas, it's not reading.
And the kiosk for the historic site, where did you say that we're, we're gonna go?
So, we'll do historic kiosks at Speaker Park, Stone Peers, and.
Witcher.
And Witcher Tower. Okay, and we did get the Sac County Downwind Grant, took on half of that. And uh, the Historic Preservation Commission's kinda heading that up as far as the design of, of the kiosks. Had some, you know, lots of nice comments on the one down there by the chief, and that they would all be just similar to that. And splash pads, and yes, I added that on to Ruth's priorities, just to make sure that it stays in the mix, we need to continue to talk about that. That hundred twenty thousand dollars is, is probably where we end up on price, that's what we'll be talking with people about as we continue to go out front. Is uh, hundred twenty thousand. The design actually is a different design than, than what we had looked at originally, it's a different company. But this different company was able to meet, meet the things that the committee really liked, like a, a big concrete pad that basically has an outline of a lake in it. And, and it gives the, again, it's just the outline of the lake, it's another way to tie this into, to be an water related.
Well, Scott, can you say something, um, are you, is the council then gonna look at that in the budget for next year? Because they didn't get a grant, because they didn't have any city support, and I just wondered if two thousand seventeen, if you'd try to kind of address that again, look at that again.
That's what we had talked about, was.
You know, I mean, I know they've made mistakes, but they're volunteers, they're not getting paid anything. They're not professional planners, so, you know, I, I just think they need to move forward with it, and I'm hoping that the council will speak to, to help them. At least so they can get grants, you know, really cut their legs off if they're not able to get any grants. And I, I don't remember what you gave for the playground, but I know that you helped out with that.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, thirty-one, thirty-one.
You know, just for the, for the people in the crowd, what, what we're doing tonight is, is, is kind of the start of a budget process. What we do is have all of our department heads go through and work through their inventory, and then work towards this needs assessment about what it is that they want to do. So this is how we introduce things that come to the budget, budget discussion for next year. Or, you'll hear a couple of things for two and three years.
West side of the office?
West side.
Yeah, the, uh, they're sort of office, and they're building the campuses on, and the frame and dampening.
The water pad or something, isn't that, and the golf pad has to be repaired, the water, you got that done? What about, you said the water was leaking out of it, was that something else that just broke? Mike was supposed to fix it, wasn't he?
Oh, that was, yeah, the pond.
Pond, yeah, the pond.
Yeah, that, that made some attention, but the wall is caving in.
Still have to talk really nice to mine.
Go ahead and say no, see where that's maybe.
You might get a free a lot of it.
Yeah.
I give you some, wait a minute, go.
So on the benches then, Ruth, would we look at these as possible memorial benches?
Could, could.
And they'd be the same type of concrete benches that we have all around town?
Yes. And then the more concrete pads. What, do you, uh, I mean, we're talking, that, we have to plan two, three years ahead of time, of the reservations that start that time. Cause we have to, probably would have to eliminate some sites in three years.
How many general lifts were twenty thousand?
I don't, I don't have any idea.
I have, the, the ones that we did.
I don't remember what we did last year.
Was about that much, maybe a little bit more. Was, uh, was what we did last year.
That's all right, for all of them?
For all the concrete, yeah. And the whole project's a lot more than that, that was just kind of.
Yeah, but the, the concrete was twenty thousand for the clay pad?
Done about right?
That seems, seems awful reasonable, but.
Did you throw away that concrete?
I believe we did.
Oh, and I saw you get ripped off.
She's tough tonight. How many pads were there?
Twenty.
That was twenty.
I can't, I'm gonna do things, but that's not.
Maybe there's supposed to be one in front of that.
I would say that's my number, Derek.
Maybe there's supposed to be a one in front of that.
Could be.
Ruthie, what section would we do?
I don't know, I was talking to ask about.
Yeah, Terry, you're right off the top.
Yeah, what if we did the, like, cross where the street where all the gravel was?
Right across the street.
Right across the new pad. From the new pads, if we're looking at the section for one fifty.
Were you using a dam?
Yeah.
We would have to, we would have to eliminate some sites in there, because they're already getting too small.
Yeah, I know they are.
Yeah. That's, that's a thought.
And it is almost, alleviate a lot of water, too, because they flood so easily.
I don't know, we'll have to think about it, but.
Water's running the wrong way, you're gonna have to change the way the water runs, then take, take it to the east. I mean, we're, it's, it's draining west right now.
Yeah.
But if you raise that up, then it, well, uh, you'd have to really do some thinking about that. You might have to dig them down, if anything, dig it out.
Yeah.
Dig the white rock out, put your pad in, and I think it's gonna make more.
Then you'd be driving over the concrete instead of mud, really. Cause they, I mean, if it's like.
Well, we can make it just like the pad when they're there, but it's, it's gonna be considerable amount of dirt work again, because. Seem to me there's like six inches of fall from the very west driveway all the way across those paths. As long as they come to the fall, I remember it right. We have days around this summer, that was, and we can't make it run the other way, but we'd have to do some canal work.
Well, we could look at the sites all over, I guess, and.
You could come up with a plan and then fuck the longest winter when we're not working quite so hard.
But if you're, if you're eliminating sites, then you gotta redo all the waters, all the electrical, right?
There's a water department, and there's an electrical.
End of story.
I can see you're not paying for the water.
We look forward to a plan, Ruth, if it really makes a difference on the money coming in if we fix it up, right? Build it, and we'll come.
You bet, because these campers are getting so big, my gosh, when you, when they come in forty foot long with five slide outs and, you know.
So is there any merit, any merit to doing away with your C-section?
Uh, I'd love to, where are you gonna put the carnival? Your backyard?
I'll, I'll reserve them for the weekends, you know, I.
I don't wanna make it nice, though. Okay. Well, you know, we talked about doing something over there, but.
Discussing.
But what, I mean, the way they jam in there, I. Huh?
You're live.
What?
Give it some thought, Ruth. Okay.
Remind me to tell you about it.
You did fine.
I learned from you, John.
There you are. That one didn't hurt as well.
Okay, are we done?
Yeah, we're done.
Okay.
Rose?
Whoop, that's your favorite.
No, wow, that's my.
You got mine?
I think it is, I got mine.
Oh, oh, that's from, that's from the last fire department.
Oh, yeah, that is mine.
Yeah.
I spent that long, I didn't know if you'd have a new map for a night or not.
Okay, Rose, I got the free one, that's for you.
I'd like to see what's on my list, Ruth, she really wants me to have, so. No, actually, on ours, uh, we anticipate the sale of two of our police vehicles this next coming year, so I was hoping to use some of the revenues to offset a new, purchase of a new one. So basically, all I'd ask for was for half of the truck, which we had set half aside for last year. Purchase a, uh, three new portable radios, one we purchased in two thousand eight, it's only eight years old, so, I think we can make the one work. A new radio for our patrol vehicle, the one that's about twenty years old and it doesn't work just right anymore. And uh, this next one, I'm not, what's that, what do you? It'll pick up some of the times, it'll turn, but some of the times it's nothing but static, so you see walkie-talkie. Then the two thousand thirteen, the vehicle we have has a light bar on it, well, they had to drill a hole in the roof to, um, run the wiring up through it, and I discussed and keep it, and we're gonna have this vehicle long-term. I'd like to actually have it fixed properly, welded, and kind of painted a little bit, just for the longevity purpose of it. And then, uh, our in-car camera in the two thousand thirteen no longer functions, and it's out of warranty, so I was hoping to just get into one of those. We could have applied for a grant, but we've already applied for that grant, and use it towards the purchase of other things.
Uh, as far as vehicles go, so they have those two Dodges, and.
Actually, point holders are rams, they're not Dodgers anymore, I, I saw it through bankruptcy, they explained stuff, taught their brands.
Point taken.
Thank you.
So, do we have these two rams? Anyway, the, the idea that we've been floating around is that we take the, the ram that's to be retired in two thousand thirteen, right? And get that changed over to be the administrative vehicle. We have that Ford Explorer, and we have a Charger.
Both which need thrown away.
And, you know, just the idea is the, yeah, those are, have, will, they really come to the end of their life, and if we can have an administrative vehicle, we keep this other pickup around. Get that changed over, and use that as the administrative vehicle, but we would keep it outfitted for clicks, as in, still has lights and radios.
Yeah, we have to, we'll have different lights, and we're not gonna have a light bar on top of it.
They do periodically need a third vehicle, that's what comes to mind.
And Ruth really wants me to have this now.
Yeah, I do, Roy.
Verified.
Is it in car camera, or is that a, hold it, hold it, is that camera?
It was bought two thousand fourteen, since four years old. And we've already put more, uh, bought other parts for it, it just, it hasn't worked right since we've had it. And the other one works perfectly, same camera, same everything.
Said two thousand fourteen, that's only two years old.
Yeah.
With a warranty on it.
Is the camera more of a priority, cause that keeps us, you know, out of trouble?
Well, yes, and uh, actually, it's something that, when we have our vehicle up there, is they've installed for us, so I'd like to have it for them, but we do, we do have eye cams, by the way, too, but yeah, an in-car camera is a necessity.
It makes the lawyers happy, doesn't it?
Yes, and protection wise, it will be too. It's funny how people, they're obscured, what happens, happened to it.
People aren't honest.
They just have different recollections.
You know, that's good, Bill.
Cash, what do we know?
That one, one of that tower later. That, now, updating a couple, and WAPA contract, contact C. But, it is, it is, just when we were talking about it. Um, Dean had agreed to the one point, one percent losses, so that is done. And then one other thing that was up was the, uh, putting in numbers of the transmission losses, that's two point six four percent. I called WAPA and haven't heard nothing back. And this contract states, return both original exhibits to the above address within seventy-five days of the date stamped above this, or this exhibit shall be known void, seventy-five days is last month. So, I can do what WAPA says. I called Dean, and Dean said, uh, a lot of counts inside, so. They sent every one of us in this, face. So we'll get, we'll see what, see, see over here, but they provide losses up to seven percent, and by stating the, the losses of two point six four percent is irrelevant to our cost, so it. Doesn't mean, and I, I, I told WAPA, I'd just like to leave it the way it is, at seven percent, but they're adding that one sentence, that's why you have to change it every year. So your cost would remain the same. So your costs remain the same. Just waiting to hear WAPA. Be more likely you guys plug well, we probably. Do you want to start page twenty-four, Scott?
Yep.
Lucky you had anything on bolt from the concrete.
Yep.
Everything's checked off, where it always is.
I got questions, but then, I thought we had a budget to replace that ten, the red tunnel.
Right, that's for this year, right. I'm actually doing the bidding right now.
You wanna go through that year real quick, though, Bill, what we were talking about today, and this price is coming a little high.
You're looking at, um. Right now, we have an F three fifty and it drags that bumper to the ground with the VAP on it and, uh, the trailers and stuff, and Jeff and, uh, Cameron would like to bid an F five fifty. It's a heavier chassis and it's also dual wheels in the back, so it's made for full trailers. And, um, basically, uh, SL, which is the bottom line of the Ford, you're, you're talking at around forty-five thousand just for that pickup. The cab and chassis. If I was body, we paid, I think it was ten eight, uh, ten years ago. So I'm looking at that being around twelve, fourteen probably, but I haven't got any bids on yet. So we budgeted forty-five thousand, well, that's just gonna cover the cost of the cab and the chassis. That's, see how high prices have gone up. On the, the priority on the, we buried a lot of, reburied a lot of lines in town, replacing primary rock, because we, we barely, barely ever out of power. And we need to keep doing that, because there's a lot yet to do yet. That's actually number four.
So you do that, you know, or you contract the house?
We, we, that's one we bid out. Show and construction can do quite a bit of it.
What's gonna take for you, if you had to, could you do it?
Show brings down six guys and sometimes he has twelve.
Hardly four, no, yeah.
Almost all of it, Jerry, you just can't, you can't dig anymore.
We're saying, we don't have four, I'm sure.
But to give you guys an idea, Leroy brings down minnows, six guys, and then, um. His last year's job was a lot more time between than what anybody thought, and there was a week to sort of do some six more guys, so we, you have a lot of manpower there.
Oh, a typical project like that takes.
Was that lasting two months, Scott? It was quite a while.
Oh, they were, I don't know, quite true, they were here a long time, they encountered a lot of trouble when they.
They had one, one job, why did, they brought it in. He was lighting up the jobs, they brought twelve guys with two crews in and they finished it in two weeks. Like, you know, what we normally do, we, we pretty much stay at the same footage as every time we bid.
How much can you get done for eighty thousand?
Jerry, the three-phase line, you're probably looking at forty-five thousand a mile. For one mile. A single phase, you're, you're up at the, probably the twenty-five thousand range, but you gotta realize two of them. If you got more and bid two miles, you're gonna pay a lot more than that forty thousand, forty-five.
Well, we wanted eighty thousand, that's a good picture.
And that's what, uh, we did the FEMA project, that's what the engineer's estimate was per mile for three phases, single phases. So you can, if you can do your, involve, you save a lot of money. The FEMA job came in at, in on a fifty cents to a dollar.
About half as much.
Because you did so much, you know, but you really, that's how I do my underground, you don't wanna do a little bit, you wanna save up and do a big chunk, cause you're getting. Mobilization expensive.
Getting, getting better rate all the way around, so.
It's everything, and the contractor's gonna go out and do the big jobs, they can't like them, they gotta get your guys busy. But you can see that, like, number one coincides with number three. Number one is, that's just for the engineering to go out, diagnose the per unit cost, the engineering work, ready to go out for bid, is what that could cover. I called up BG on it, I said, what would that, I asked him for an estimate, unless we beat it in thirty-five.
Be you getting a better rate in bid in the winter time now?
Hundred percent.
That's what I thought.
I love bidding in January.
Really, this was actually gonna be looking probably two thousand eighteen.
Yep.
And I'm assuming by the time the budget comes around, it's too late.
Yep, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
And there, there is some money in the current budget, though.
Right, I mean, we're not some budgeting that, but, but.
A little project, yeah.
For small, but, and eighty thousand, you know, this is gonna help a whole lot.
What we've done before, like, say, if we were at eighty thousand on underground, that, that was the contractor price for the, uh, for the contractor, and we, we supplied all, all the materials.
Right.
In addition to that eighty thousand.
We use the, we use our inventory, but on the line I budgeted, providing the material. But, we buried lines, I've got lines that we've buried for, for thirty years now and have never had a problem.
I understand, I mean, up to a, a two thousand eighteen project problem.
If you, if you guys start, like, I suppose your next budget this year is in July, seventeen, eighteen, you'll probably go up there at that next January, two thousand.
Right, make bids.
No, you said two thousand eighteen, right, you received it, and also it gives you engineer time to line up his jobs.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that's how far out you're looking, and the poles are really, I mean, they're getting bad, some of the poles. We spent ninety-five percent of our time in town this year. So we're not getting out the country there often, that's what we're gonna be doing this week here when it warms up, tree trimming, maintenance like that. You know, you're looking, and the more, the farther out your plan, the better it is, and you're getting the better bids, you're gonna get, engineers will like it more.
I understand.
So do you think you'll have to replace some of these poles before we get into a, to a big bid, I mean, I guess.
I can almost guarantee, yeah, we've had, way, we've had a fall over already, just from wind. And we had a pole guy here, here by a tractor south of town, and I went and checked the next pole south and it had run on the bottom, so. We're lucky the pole he hit, it was a new FEMA pole, new solid pole.
I feel like he was a blessing.
Oh, you betcha.
I hate to say it, but.
You're better, you're better off being lucky than getting it. We got a good system. And that allowed us to concentrate all of our time, we buried this, crack rhythm's going back, so.
But you still have to maintain it.
Oh, yeah, we, we're out there taking hard work all the time.
So if you had to replace a few poles, you'd do that, if you had.
That's what we've been doing.
Yeah, but if you find a couple of adwords, you get us to our next point, that's it, yeah.
But that's what Jerry said there, you're looking at, you know, January two eight, two thousand eighteen, ready to go off for bid, but this, this is, the study realizes is the bid pattern, ready to go off for bids. Then the council, when you do that, you're gonna know exactly what you, you're gonna do and accept or reject all bids, too, if you want, you know, always have that right. But just for, for planning purposes, I think, that's it. Another thing is our, our rates for, through the year two thousand fifteen, we've got pretty good rates, you know, stable rates. Where you're not gonna look at, you know, high costs and also power increases. So that's another way to, the timing's good, plus, as I said, we just. God, I hate to say this, you can't stop rebuilding this wire, there's a lot to rebury in town, you gotta keep reburying water. Just coming out of the sub, the wire's nineteen seventy-seven, so. It's a lot of water out there. It didn't help slay any gravel, water like dry ground. Like, so, you don't want your feet in it.
Well, they already seized when they first started burying, they buried five miles of it, and they probably got the second five miles buried, they had to go to what.
You betcha, yeah. We had the same problem here, we, we buried out in the off course, and that wire all in that. The new wire is so much better than the old wire. It's evolution, you know, it's just the way it's gonna be. That, that pretty much speaks the system.
Can you, can you talk about the trencher real quick, or Bill, and, yeah, are you looking at budgeting that for next year, or is this in year two or three, or what do you think?
What I would recommend, Scott, is just, I mean, number one, and then sticking with the replacing underground. You use the mini excavator a lot, I'm telling you, you can't get anywhere anymore. The Blue House on North State Road, we brought the mini excavator to dig in the service. So I would, of everything on there, number one should be a priority, and. You know, that can also maintain and replace the underground in town. Like John asked me about, are our faults are all fixed, you know, everything we know about that one bad is all fixed, so. The last line we had that was broke was from the Laney's, uh, shop back here across the hills, um, I didn't wanna do it, cause I didn't wanna bust Main Street the first. I didn't wanna be the person to bust Main Street. So we put that off for days. And we went through there and never hit nothing, so. All bolts were fixed, so.
Thanks, Bill.
We did better nights.
Yeah.
Ron? I'll bet he does.
I'm just gonna elaborate on, like Bill said, that Mini X was a good investment, because every, every time we dig anymore, that's what we're using. And, uh, but if you're looking on page twenty-five, we put one heck of a lot of hours on the back door, I was kinda surprised with that, uh, actually a hundred hours more than normal, I believe it was, pretty close to that. A lot of it had to do with pumping, um. In the spring, that tractor, you know, was running twenty-four hours a day. But, uh, other than that, I mean, my equipment's in pretty good shape. If you go to page twenty-six. Everything's looking good there, except for well three, at some point, you're gonna have to address that well, uh, we know we got a hole in the casing and it pumps a lot of air. We only use it about one month out of the year, and the only reason I do that is cause it pumps so much air into the system. DNR would like us to use it at least once a month, a week a month, and we don't, just because. So that's something maybe, you know, down the road, I'm not asking for anything on that, because it, it still is working, um. Just so that everybody understands them, that is our, our only backup well, we have that, one down on the bike road, we run that one all the time, and then this one's in Speaker Park, that's the only backup.
Did it cost to fix it?
No, he probably thought we'd have full casing, put in the casing, and so you're looking at hundreds of thousands, how big it. I believe that's a ten inch, I believe it is.
They can, but it wasn't safe.
But we're giving all the pumps and everything, you know, you know. Cause they're kinda specific how they screw down in there to seal that all, so. But, uh, and guys, I mean, we can make this last a long time unless DNR comes in and tells us, you gotta run it every, all the time, they've been suggesting that, I'm gonna say they're suggesting. So, with that being said, uh, lift stations are doing real well, um, on, on, uh, number thirteen, the one we had so many problems with. We, uh, sat down, sent out a couple letters, we sent them out two different times, and that, we have not had a problem since. So, um, that might have cured our problem, but we're not sure about that. But, uh, as, as of now, it's been about a month and a half, we haven't had the pole that pump, so that maybe was the ticket. Moving on to the next page quick, uh, number one would be Ruthie's and Scott's priority, not mine. Look, what's that? That new building. Oh, I didn't put that down.
Mine?
Go through the rest of your stuff, but I want to, and we'll come back and discuss that, Bill. Uh, the trailer for the Mini X, uh, to drive the Mini X down to the log cabin area takes a half an hour. And, uh, I mean, I just, I did that on purpose, just to see how long it'd take, takes a long time, that's from our shop. Well, I'd like to have a dedicated trailer for that, so that we can keep it loaded on there, that we'd have both buckets on there instead of just one bucket, and, uh, um. Then we can just hook up to it and go, it'd be a lot quicker and everything clear.
Would you use a, a ferret or something else, or two?
I would, I would prefer to leave the Mini X set on it, and then we just hook it up.
You got one for the skid loader anyway?
No.
Oh.
No, we drive the skid loader almost everywhere, I mean, you'd drive the skid loader out around the lake in twenty minutes, so. And it goes a lot faster, all this new one doesn't go as fast as the old one, but it, but a lot of times, we just drive the skid loader, might have a little bit of. Replacing the skid loader would be something that was in that contract when we purchased the last one. In my opinion, that's money well spent, because, well, every three hundred hours, we buy a set of tires. And, uh, and they're shot at three hundred dollars, and, uh. I'm guessing right at about fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred dollars for a set of tires on this new one, so. If you pencil it out over the years, I think it's actually a pretty good deal from what we, it cost us to trade last time, so. But, and that's entirely up to you guys, how you wanna do that, uh. That, that number is, that is the, the trade in the six thousand dollar, that was the amount. Now, you don't have to, you're not obligated to do that, guys, just, we just have it down here so that, you know, it can be budgeted in. Plasma cutter's something for the shop down there, um, I don't know if you're all familiar with plasma cutter, it's basically throwing electrons out with air, compressed air, rather than using oxygen and settling. Very handy tool, the city's run in mines several, several times, and, uh. Eighteen hundred bucks, you know, it's not a lot of money, but, uh, it's, it'd be a piece of equipment that we could use quite often.
Does it cost us a lot of rent, that one?
I think, I don't know what we were charging yet, I mean, you can look at that, but it, I mean, you had it the whole time you did the, all, it was there all last winter, so I don't really think we charged you just too much.
Oh, hell, Bill, white by white, right? Yeah, we'd like a bargain.
The backhoe's something I put down, it's way, way down on my priority list. The only reason I put it down is because of the age, and it, it's up to you guys, where do you wanna start, you know, where do you wanna keep your equipment up? You know, um. My backhoe's a nineteen eighty-four, I use it all the time, you know, so. It'll last a long time if we kept it up.
Yeah, like the, the snow and stuff like.
No, right, but we still put three hundred thirty-seven hours on it last year, which is probably almost the most hours we've ever put on a machine, and, uh.
I think you don't have anything.
Way down on my priority list.
I see you don't have anything on it to dump, so.
Well, Scott and I talked about that, and, and what we, what I'd like you, to see you do is maybe start, maybe just putting a little money away each year for it. I think I can get four or five more years out of that old green, that's a ninety-seven, I believe. But what's happening is the bucks, the box on the backhoe's starting to rust out, and it was the same type of box that fell off the other one. So, if, but I think we can get four or five years out of it, you know, and, and put a little money away each year for that, and then we have the money to purchase a new one, you know.
Didn't we talk about that last year?
I didn't, I know we've talked about that, I don't know that, uh, we didn't do anything as far as, as starting any specific set of site fund, but we'll include that on, and we'll. See what we come up with, uh, about being able to fund a little set of them. Do you, do you wanna go back to the building, Scott, and build a little, a little bit on? I'll do the rest of your stuff here, of course. Okay, all right, um, of course, you got your street project coming up, and that's, that's already been taken care of, and, um, this curbing gutter, it should be priority two, I believe. If you go down by Sue Mine, you know, we had some complaints down in there, um, uh, going down towards the gas parties there, there's oil in the washout there, I mean, we're putting rock in that thing all the time. Four or five days later, you got a hole in there again and we get complaints, you know, so. I'd like to put some curbing gutter along there, now, depending on how far the money would go, we can, we can kinda decide that, how far that curbing gutter should go up. Firstly, if you, if you took it up. Firstly, if you, if you took it up to where the water tower starts, would be the best. But it doesn't have to go up that far.
The water tower driveway?
The water tower driveway, yes. It doesn't have to go that far. The, the big washout is down the hill. So.
It's a big hole there, though.
All the time, all the time, Terry. I mean, it's just a constant battle.
I guess, too, there was the frost, though.
Yeah, that's something. Um, Harrison Street is down by Sue Mines. And then the two blocks on Main Street are also down by Sue Mines would be in front of Roberts's, um, that first block down there between Harrison and, and, uh. Two blocks south of Main Street, from, from the very south, from Harrison Street's, uh, north. Lake Shore Drive, that's something that you guys were kind of looking at last year, I think, and, and of course, it kind of got put back, but, uh. I'm thinking, this is a guess now, guys, I'm thinking around eighty thousand dollars is what you're looking at to start from, from where we left off at the mayor's, where we put the new storms over in there a couple of years ago for shapers. And, uh, and then going to the south, all the way around the corner to, is it, Mrs. Hanson? Who is, Hannah Hanson that was in that area.
Olson, Olson.
Out of Lake Street.
Out of Lake Street, yes.
And, you know, talk to Lon about that, about having Lon design a project there. What we do is, is get a bid spec ready to go and, and just bid that to local contractors. But we need that Lon, get that, get that.
I'm a little concerned about that, doing that, just because there's, it's pretty detailed. It's, it's as complicated as an alley is what you have out there that, that we did last summer. It's a very complicated alley. There are elevations and stuff like that. You know, how you want to write it up, you know. Water has to run to the drain, you know, that's probably the way to write it up.
A good start.
And then, of course, you got the intersection out there at M fifty-four. Uh, we're trying to work with the county, uh, get a little involvement out of them. Maybe we can help, have them help us pay for some of that. And that really is out by Mrs. Clausen's, the old bay shop, that intersection right in there. And we measured that up, um, last summer sometime, we, and, and gave it to my.
Yeah, John took it to the county.
I took it to the county supervisor.
Yeah.
The engineer supposedly came down and looked at it, too.
Okay.
But I guess, because we haven't heard about them since.
Bad corner there, too, on, uh, M fifty-four, Navco's corner, where the trucks always take that corner and drop off. As trucks drop off, or the bus drops off, too.
Off the highway?
When you're, they got out of the, turn that on.
Going to the west or east?
Going to the north.
I mean, a little.
You know, I know that. It's exactly where the sign is down there on the end, right on the end, where you turn off a, uh, one seventy-five to the north. So I'd say trouble keeping some drivers.
Uh, before we get too much into water, Lon, can you talk a little bit about the water tower and where we're at on?
Well, I called Jeff Code today. He was supposed to be here last week, which I didn't care, the income was pretty cold out. But, uh, we have been running the tower over several times. Uh, it's, we don't have any way of knowing when the tower's full. So we're just kind of timing and guessing when the tower's full. Well, we've run it over on purpose several times, but we've run it over because we forgot to turn it off. You know, you get to doing things, you forget to turn it off. But, uh, what we're going to do is replace the radios with this company that Jeff Code does all of our, our computer work down there on, on our SCAD, SCAD system. And, uh, we would like it, uh, this John, what's his name?
Zeman.
Zeman. I called him up to get him to come and work on it. Alpha Wireless bought them out. John doesn't want to work on it. He said, you know, the system's twenty-five years old, guys, it's time to replace it, you know. And if you go down there, it's actually built in Cape Town. And I hung on the wall with these plywood. I mean, it's pretty, pretty archaic. But anyway, so what we're going to do is replace just what we need to replace right now, the part that isn't working. And then as radios start to fail, then we will replace, uh, well three and well four. Right now, we're just replacing the, the water tower and the system at the, at the plant. And that's going to be, it'll cost about forty-five hundred dollars if I remember right. And, and, uh, then as, as needed, we'll have to replace that. It probably won't be in the budget for it. But, um, you know, I'm hoping it's a four or five thousand dollar fix each time, so. Uh, the replacing of the water valves, we'll be doing that right away in the spring. And, uh, Fifth Street will not have to be replaced. Uh, I called Jack the other day, and he actually replaced that, him and Jeff replaced that when I was gone, some time on vacation. So, Seventh Street, though, there's two valves up there we're going to replace, so we're still at, at that, uh, two valves. So, um, um, then I've got the fire hydrants out at Provost and Thirty Acres. They're leaking, but we're going to call a company that, have them come up and look. Brown Supply out of Ford Dodge has, if his boy fixes fire hydrants now, we're going to have him take a look, because it would be quite considerably cheaper to have him do it if he can. Of course, replacing the five more water valves, I'd really like to, uh, uh, start down here by the post office. There's three of them right in that street right there that need to be taken care of, because that would isolate some of our areas, especially down that way. Um, you know, we have, uh, uh, Turner Systems exercises our valves, and I have the records at, in the office down there. And it, he counts how many turns they, they go, so we know which valves we need to fix, so. This side we put on there every year, it just seems like it doesn't ever get done. Of course, we all know about the Lagoon project. Major, major deal.
The, uh, just the, the little update on that is that our anti-degradation analysis has been approved. And, um, the, it's just something that the engineer kind of did behind the scenes, but, but it ends up being one of the important approvals up the process. And this needed to happen before you could continue on with anything else. But that's, that's been approved, and kind of on to the next one.
Sewer Thirty Acres, I've actually contacted Pete Howell. They haven't gotten back to me yet. Uh, they're trying to schedule us in. Um, we tried to do that last year. We had no frost. We buried the truck out there, and, uh, this year, we should be able to get out there and, uh, take care of that, clean that sewer out, and then we'll have to cavaize it as soon as we get that done. And then continue lift station upgrades and maintenance. It, it takes twenty grand a year just to, just to do it, just to, you know. Just to keep the pumps up. I mean, we've got one down at the sewer plant right now, it's ten thousand dollars. Well, we're just going to try and lift along, hopefully can make a year and a half, two years, and go with it. We roofed the water plant. Pretty bad sheet, guys. And it's leaking here pretty quick, but, um, in the past, the city has done that, but now we're into the, this water plant, be a little bit different situation, because we're going to have to take all the siding off and everything to tie it into the other roof. Only the, only the top roof, the higher roof, needs to be replaced right now. But it wouldn't hurt to, seems like what we're doing, let's just do the whole thing, and then it's all updated. Well, the city did in the past, but if you're going to tear off.
So what do you expect?
Well, I say you put it up for bids and have a contractor do it. You know, do it with the decker shingles like we've done everything else. It's a fifty-year shingle, you never have to do it again. You know, have a new plant there before you have to replace shingles. And then decker shingles have dealt us real well so far. I mean, it's been a pretty good deal.
Very good.
Unless you want to talk about this?
We want to talk about the building. And really, the only thing in the back of our building is, is that aerial podium. You know, this came out of, out of our planning session last year, about having more storage down around the shops. And it started off thinking maybe we want to have some additional cold storage. And over time, this thing has, has kind of morphed as, as Lon and Bill have, have looked at that, kind of done some analysis about good areas and then really what their, what their wants and desires are. And that, that's why we have the, uh, the aerial podium there. What this would propose is to say that, uh, the preferred location for ease of construction is actually there at those bins, and the bins, bins could be removed and then the, uh, a new building could be built there. That building is posed at about seventy by one twenty, which is bigger than the existing shop. Okay? With the idea being, um, there that, that basically you, you build that one, the electric would end up in this new shop. Lon would have, would have the old shop have enough area for storage of their own equipment in, in each one of their shops. Both of the shops then being insulated and heated. You know, that's, that's taken a, taken a turn from where we started, if we were looking at cold storage.
And that's where we were looking. If, if, if this, this, uh, closet next to the old shop or the newest shop is, uh, that's heated anyway. And what, you know, if you take, yeah, that's always been heated, and, and, uh, so. Yeah, it's a hell of a lot of heat going out of there, and we think if you put a new shop up, I bet you can heat the new shop cheaper than you can just heat that one closet. The reason we kind of picked that site, guys, is if, when we built the last shop, we hauled about four foot of dirt in there. And this site, there, there won't be a lot of dirt prep to do. Uh, um, and the fact that we can keep things in that closet until the new building is built, and then kind of have a transition, move the things over.
Who's bins?
The, uh, yeah, so the bins are owned by Jim Stock, and he has leased land from the city for decades. Uh, and he pays us a little bit then, every month on, on this land. We have been under agreement with him on it. Uh, the agreement is, is actually expired, but we just continue to bill him every month for it. And he pays us the same rental fee that he's paid for, like I say, decades, about, about renting this little, little bit of land. Uh, I've talked with Jim. He had some like sixty bucks.
But these bins, too, though, they're no problem. I mean, they used to have a little crane to move them. Put a tire up in there, pull, lift them up, and that's where we lifted our bags like that into the cars.
Yeah, I, I will just relay my conversations with him, and I've talked with him twice now. And he's just not at all excited about, about the city utilizing that space. And, you know, he says that he uses those bins and would like to continue to use them and would prefer that the city look at another site.
It would be a big hardship on Jim Stock. He is a struggling, difficult person. It would be a big hardship on Jim.
What would you do with the old closet, though, once you eventually tell them to out of it? That was a game plan. The one that we use is completely rusted out. I mean, you could walk in there and tell them to walk. No, we don't need ours.
I was going to say.
No, that took five hundred gallons a week when we used to heat that. When we used to heat that shit. We'd fill it up every week. And then we got about thirty-two degrees.
Hard that global warming.
Try and heat yourself outside.
Yeah, fine.
Whole deal, you know, the whole deal there is that you're going to get rid of that eventually. So you say you got to haul in a bunch of dirt? How much would you have to haul in?
Well, four foot. Four, and by, that's got to be bigger than that footprint, it's going to, you know, you're going to have to have some backload from it, too, and.
But this one, the.
Seven thousand square feet you're looking at, more than, so almost eight thousand square foot for a building, eight four hundred, I believe it is. Four foot.
But this building isn't, this part wasn't good, basically.
No, this is a hundred twenty. These closets are ninety foot long. And, I mean, that's why we're actually adding an extra twenty foot to that building, because time Bill gets all his stuff in there. Uh, I believe the insurance company wants the transformers into, is that correct, Bill? So it, it eats up the building pretty fast.
So this is, Bill, you got his stuff there.
Bill was in the first one, and I'm in the, this second one here.
Wait, is it the same deal if you put it on this side, uh, over here?
Right here, down in here. You'll have to do some dirt work, not quite as much. I mean, just so we get the water to run away from the building, but, um. There, I mean, this was just something we came up with, just because it was the cheapest way to go, we thought. Uh, we're not trying to push Jim out or anything. It was just, you asked us for ideas and.
Sure.
And, uh.
Add about this, okay, now it's there.
It, it, you're probably going to need about six foot of dirt right down in here. And, and this building is designed to add on to those, yeah. I believe it was.
Does this give you much, uh, complications when telling them to unload the bed?
A little bit, once in a while, since it is, when you agree, Bill, for getting your trucks back in and stuff, and. Well, right there's the augers and stuff, and there's, there's a setting, you know.
So, so what you're telling me on this building that's sitting there, that newest one, that was set up at one time to add on, is that kind of?
I think it was built, if I remember right, it was built to add on, but I'm not sure about that. I could do some checking on it. Um, that was Wick Sato Jefferson that put that up.
But it really wouldn't have to, if you could have that.
Well, I, I think what the deal is, is the raptor on the very end, whether that's strong enough, they might have to take that one out, put a different raptor in and move that one to the end, or they'd probably just get rid of it now, but, uh. We're, this building's only sixty foot wide. We were proposing seventy foot, because if you get Bill's trucks back and back, there is no room to walk around the backside of them, and he would like a place for storage of his electrical equipment, and then they can just walk back behind and load the truck, and, which makes a lot of sense.
So you don't think they would be able to put a seventy foot wide building out here?
I'm wondering about the pitch of the roof.
Yeah.
Because then you start losing headspace as you, but you're going another ten foot, but I'm, I'm thinking that was a, I think it was a two twelve pitch or a one twelve pitch, I'm not really sure. So you're only, if you go out ten foot, you're losing a foot. Is that something you're losing more than that? To thirty inches, I'm figuring it in my head right, to thirty inches. So then you're down to a, you know, less than a fourteen foot wall on the backside, well then, if, if we're going to move the transformers in, I think Bill had talked about maybe getting some shelling like you guys use, and we could put them transformers and stack them up. And that, to better utilize the space.
So you're saying it's fourteen foot wide?
The sidewalls right now are sixteen foot, okay, but if you add, if you add ten foot, and it's on a two, uh, that'd be twenty, twenty inches you'd lose, if it's a two percent slope or a two twelve slope. Well, that's a rough figure, and I'm, I'm not sure it's a two twelve pitch, so.
So what, what kind of cost savings, you know, if you're attaching on this other building, is there some savings on, on that, with that wall, or how's that look?
I, I really don't think there'll be, I don't think it'll cost you more. I really think it'd cost you more.
Really?
I, I'm, I'm not sure about that, but I bet would. Because then, then you're, especially if that raptor isn't made right to add on, then they have to redo that. Unless you leave that wall and they add, I, I don't know.
Is there somebody you could talk to that could?
Oh, I could call that company up. I think they're still in Jefferson. Wick Sato Jefferson, have them come up and take a look.
Just due diligence, just to see if that would?
Um, if you go out a hundred and twenty foot, is that going to come into play with this other guy's building?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking there, Terry.
If you look at the white building in the lower left, okay, the property lines aren't, on the photograph, aren't necessarily right. You see the property line there, the blue property line runs right through the building, okay? Now that's going to be off a little bit on this. Okay, now that's gonna be off a little bit on this, on these aerial photos.
There's a hole, you can see the shadow of that hole. That's his northeast corner of his property line.
So that's why I'm thinking it won't go there. You guys see that telephone boiler right here? Right there.
Yep.
The big thing that we thought with putting it over here is the fact that we could utilize the closets. You guys need to walk in there and just see how much is in there. I mean, it's standing room only, you ain't gonna get nothing else in them. We're stepping over stock.
You mean utilize the closets, like?
Utilize them until we got, no, until we got the new building built. And then you can remove the old closets and.
Just take both of them?
Well, I think that's the game plan anyway.
But these are all, but you could get the car machine and stuff. How long would a project like that take then?
I think they could, you know, well, the last time they did it, I believe it took them about a month or a month and a half. And they had to have it done by October, I believe it was, but they didn't get it done by then. In fact, the floor froze in one spot and they had to cut the floor back off, redo it.
So your concern is the stuff that's in there, sitting outside?
Well, you can't let it sit outside. You can't let Bill's stuff sit outside.
You'd have to really bring in a reefer, you know, rent a reefer and put them in reefers. You could put it in this other building for a shepherd or anything?
The new shop?
Yeah.
There's absolutely no room. There's no room in there.
You'd have to have trucks sitting outside to do that. Every, every foot of that building's full. I just thought we're gonna tear the closet down just temporarily, rent some reefers to put the inventory in the reefers so you can lock it up. Then when the new shop's built, you just put it in the shop. You move it twice, but if you don't wanna bother Jim Stock, then it's probably your second best option. Then they should go right in line with this.
Yeah, right. Twenty foot.
Seems to be much better than Jim's.
You're staying on the water, you're not messing with Jim Stock. These are good suggestions we're kicking around here, so.
It seems like, uh, the fact you're getting rid of the closets too, you know, that's one bit.
Well, I think either way, you wanna get rid of the closets.
Okay. As you look at them closets, if you go seventy feet, that's basically could have entitled that footprint that's there with the closets. Because I believe those buildings were like thirty feet. And, and, uh, I'm wondering, is it gonna be an issue with the next closet over to get stuff out of there? I haven't measured that.
I think you're talking about the commercial.
Well, there's one more building there. There's still a commercial closet down there. That isn't in the picture. Now, if we put the new building in there and we raise that dirt up there, are we gonna be able to raise that dirt up that high and get past that other closet? Or are you gonna have to move that closet?
What kind of shape that closet?
They're all, what, nineteen thirties?
They paid seventy-five dollars each for them. Oh, wow. Seriously, they did. I think you pretty should have done it.
It's still needed, you know, as far as.
You know what it sounds to me like?
Water.
It's a good time to clean it up. Get rid of it.
As you think about that, know what, just know that it's false. All of those water flows and everything, it's sorted there and everything's a water problem. I mean, it is you.
It's totally packed. Could you rent, could we rent, rather than putting it in the reefers or whatever, even the closets of the carnival, could you rent Larry's building that he doesn't use? Larry Nelson's?
The one right down there?
The big building? Well, that building or the one up down? I don't think he's putting any grain in them. Maybe he does have them full, I don't know.
When I talk to him every year, he says he's gotta clean something up before we can use it for water.
Okay, well, there you go. But that big one down there is usually empty. He's got hay in there, don't he, or tractors are pretty much pulling his stuff? Yeah, there you go, see, so that's out.
Well, we don't need, certainly don't need any decisions. Not gonna make any.
Which is great, you have to decide, first of all, before doing it, can you afford it and hold it official?
I have some concerns about the funding that I'd like to address whenever you're ready.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, if you need them, the maintenance shed, you know, certainly not an issue. And I just have some concerns about the type of funding that I think's being proposed. I just have a few handouts here. I wanna thank you for letting me talk. I know that I've been talking a lot lately. You know, I truly care about this failure, I wouldn't care what you do. I have learned a lot about TIP. When Scott first tried to give me a one-on-one on it. I've done a lot of research on it. So I just pulled off, there's so much information and the code is on there. There's so much information about TIP. But I have some concerns about the plan to use TIP financing for the, for the building. The projects that are in our urban renewal plan are legal under Iowa law. But as Scott has previously pointed out, the use of TIP funding for a city maintenance facility is not recommended by our state legislature. Do we wanna come under that scrutiny and be the poster child for misuse of TIP funds? If you feel you need a maintenance shed, which is, you know, obviously an ongoing concern, I mean, you have to have facilities for your stuff. I just hope you'll opt for another form of funding. In the urban renewal plan, it is tied in with enhancing corridor highway one seventy-five. There are some funding grants for that through Iowa Living Roadways and Trees Forever. As far as, I'm not exactly sure what the plan was for the beautifying corridor. But, um, TIP funding started in the fifties and sixties. It was for blighted areas. Then it kind of moved into economic development. And there is some use of it for low to middle income housing. And, you know, it takes the money away from the school and the county and it brings it into the city. And then it's, um, put into a separate fund. And then when that loan is paid back, then that money, that increased taxation starts going to the school and the county again. You know, where we have it here is Evaco and we have it out at Boulders. Both of those facilities raise the tax levy. So the amount of taxes increase. The difference is what we get in here into TIP. And that enables you to do projects. And perhaps, you know, the lawn run down the school and that don't get the immediate result, but they do get it later on. So when that twenty-year plan is up, then the school gets higher taxes. And so it's a good thing for them too. This project won't result in any of that. There will be no increase in tax valuation if you take all of your TIP money and put it into this building. The expansion of Lakeview Lumber to erect a new building, to put in a hardware, is actually an example of where we could have and should have used TIP funding in this community. You know, we could have offered them sidewalk, maybe sewer brought in. I mean, that's what, that's what TIP is for, is to help the community grow through economic development and increase your business, increase your revenue, increase your taxes. And I, you know, I'm kind of disappointed that that wasn't offered to the lumberyard. Because I certainly think them making the financial commitment that they're making to this community is huge. And I hope that the decision to use TIP funds for this project is not an effective way to stop the other projects that are in the urban renewal plan because it kind of looks to me like that's what it's gonna do. The one thing I wanted to make a note was, you would hope that Lakeview would use the TIP funds for economic development. It would either increase your tax revenue or it would bring people into your community to spend money. Or it would be a facility that the residents are going to be able to use. And this project accomplishes none of those things. To me, this is a normal expense that you would come up with doing business as a city. And you should fund it through normal funding procedures. I just think this is really an inappropriate use of TIP funding. And I think it'll be frowned upon by the state legislatures. And I, and if you, if you don't have any other way to do this, then I wish you'd put it to a community vote. Let the community vote if that's how they wanna spend their economic development dollars. Because it pretty much cuts off all the other projects. So, thank you for your time.
I'm working on it.
There is other funding available to do this building, right?
Not for this building? I, what we would look at is, is traditional city financing mechanisms, which would be either property taxes. Or the other one that would be available is the local option sales tax. And just running the analysis on kind of that money that's not earmarked for anything on sales tax, there's about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that's not earmarked for anything right now. So we do have lots of other smaller projects that are earmarked to come out of sales tax. But there's this hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that's not. And that can, could be, you know, all part of that could be used for a project like this too.
And you're gonna have forty thousand to throw away.
Yeah, so there, we have, last couple of years, we put ten thousand dollars a year into this, what we call the public works building. But it's just a, into this maintenance facility. Has twenty thousand right now, thirty thousand at the end of this week.
Anybody got ideas what this building would run, you know? Couple of options, you know, that we talked about?
High price is sixty by ninety. Was sixty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-five thou, plus twenty-five thousand, put it up and that was no concrete. You know, for me, yeah.
So could it, could be a chance of that, if you could talk to the people over Jefferson, just to see what, what, if that's a feasible thing, add on to that, you know? I have no idea, I'm just, be an idea.
But, well, I don't think we can keep in the property lines adding on to that building.
Like taking all three closets up?
Well, no, you could, but then you're not adding on to the building like any one. West side of the building. See, then we're gonna hit that property line of them, of the paper. Taking out all three closets there, that building.
That's the biggest difference between the.
That we're proposing that, you guys asked us to draw up, that doesn't include that building. Basically, you're putting a eighty-four hundred square foot building up and taking out nine thousand square feet. You know, it ain't gonna work.
Why don't we offer assistance to the lumberyard? Can we have done that?
Just a couple of answers, you know, the, that we, the only thing that's available for anybody who makes an improvement is the tax base. Okay, so that, that is available for any type of improvement. If, in order to spend TIP money, it needs to be within urban renewal area. And that area, the private property there's not within urban renewal area. So if you wanted to look at something, you know, again, maybe if there'd been sidewalks or something public on it, that would've been.
Can't that area be moved? Can't be, can't it be rezoned?
Rezoned, yeah, can. It, it's just, it's an amendment process of working through the.
And how long would that take?
Took a month last time.
To rezone? Why wasn't that then?
Put it in the TIP zone.
Okay. Maybe it should've been put in the TIP zone.
Yeah.
That's what we did here.
Well, we've, yeah, we've done that. We've amended it four times.
Yeah.
Also know that we paid the legal bill on that last time, it was thirty-six hundred dollars for the amendment process.
How can the lumberyard not be in the TIP zone, but the new building is, when the building's behind it?
We added that, that, that specific property was added during this last amendment. If, you know, if you look at the map, the map, it probably looks like a hot closet property.
Interesting.
Where are the TIP zones?
The original one is Evaco. And then think of Black Hawk Marine and around to the hotel. Okay? That was added on an amendment. A bunch of street right-ofways and parks land was added on amendment. And that was done when we, when we did the, uh, streetscape. Okay, so there's a lot of some street right-ofways that were added. And then this last amendment added the shop property and the city hall property.
Well, at that time, we could've added the lumber.
True.
We could've added that.
Property, yeah.
We could've added that business section, and I don't mean just the lumberyard, but that, you know, there's businesses that run that whole block and half.
It, you know, anything within that urban renewal area is gonna be within that TIP area. And it starts to affect how property taxes are, are received from the area. It would all come in as TIP revenue. You don't necessarily want any more in your, in an urban renewal area than what, what you would utilize as, as real, true tax payment projects, or, excuse me, TIP projects.
Does the streetscape part, part TIP at one, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, it didn't go to the streets behind Main Street.
No. No, again, and it's just the right-ofways, it's not private land.
Any idea how we financed the last building?
The shop down there, I do not know.
You don't find out?
Well, I thought maybe you knew.
I don't know how we financed.
I think it was electric, Jerry.
Yeah.
The electric budgeted it.
Well, there you go.
We saved for many years in all to get that.
Well, how about doing that again?
I mean, you already have, you already have a hundred thousand money to start with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It wouldn't take me that long to save it.
You have a hundred and thirty, thirty.
Well, yeah.
Pardon me? They don't need the dollar money.
No.
I think the last building was a hundred and fifteen thousand, though. That's just over a hundred thousand.
How many did that?
Six thousand.
A thousand twenty.
Well, we know it wasn't when we built it. So you're looking at what, two hundred thousand? You have a hundred and forty-three?
Probably.
Yeah.
Maybe there's a grant.
That'd be pretty double.
Something to look for. It's better than using TIP.
I think we need to get more numbers. Oh, yeah.
I agree.
We'll have one. We can see when they're not gonna be added on or whatever.
Yeah. Who knows?
I think bumping Jim's crane bins out there is kind of detrimental. Knocking another business out of league, you. I think we need to really consider that.
Let's get some numbers and, you know, and see what we can build from there.
Yeah. Take a look at that budget timeline, though, if that's. Yeah, thirty-three A. That means I missed numbers. So here's a proposed timeline to work through for budget preparation. You see that today we were doing all the inventory need assessments? We'll have a draft of capital improvement plan to start to discuss at the next council. And then we'll, we'll kinda start, uh, putting some of the numbers to it and, and where any of the funds could come from to, to look at supporting everything in the capital improvement plan. Uh, for the past several years, we've done this, this council goal setting session. And, uh, this had proposed that at Jan, at January ninth. If we look at moving that to maybe the twenty-third, what's that do for the folks?
January twenty-third.
Pardon me?
I don't know, we don't, I mean, real.
It's, it's another Monday, you know.
Oh, wow. My Monday, you're, you're saying great.
That's.
Where, why are we moving it?
It worked, it worked well for Jerry, Jerry's gonna miss it otherwise.
Okay.
And, and we'll talk dates for reunion, that's what we're doing.
No problem.
Yeah, if we, uh, if we can, I think that would be great. I do think we need to, we need to have a goal setting session and see what we can do about getting on the same page, and it seems like we're not on the same page a lot of times. At least, you know, talk that through.
Can we get much out of that?
It, we've got, we've got some, some new priorities come out of it and it, it's always good to get together. Just to have, you know, discussing. That's how the, yeah, and all the concrete pads and stuff. So, um, on the sixteenth of January, we would have all the boards come, come present their budget requests. And then on the twenty-third, we would have that planning session have a.